Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 9th zoning board hearing. Looks like we have one, two, three hearings tonight, ones continued. So the first order of business is I'd like to get a motion to approve the September 11th minutes.
Motion.
Motion by John Mastroianni. Is there a second? Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? I also need a motion for the minutes of October 2nd.
Motion.
Motion by John Mastroianni. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Flora, all those in favor? Proposed? That is unanimous. You could pass these down to Melissa, please. Thank you, Melissa, for getting that over for us tonight. Okay, this is on the application of K&amp;M Auto Sales, Inc., 83 Medway Street, Norfolk. If the applicants could please come to the front. This is on a special permit relief pursuant to sections 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the southerly side of Cape Road in Norfolk shown as assessment sheet 59, Lot 22, and known and numbered as 40 Cape Road. Special permit relief is sought to the premises to be used as a motor vehicle sales and service. This has, by the way, been has been sent off, by the way, on this Any conflicts with any board members on this particular application? If not, on the panel, myself, John Mastroianni, Mark, Robert Capazulo, and Chris Burns. Concerning the application, it is here. So the proposed use is motor vehicle sales and service. The applicant proposes to operate a small 10-car used motor vehicle sales and automotive repair services on the premises. No physical alterations of the buildings or the grounds are proposed. Concerning the question, the special permit sought in harmony with the bylaws, the applicant states the zoning bylaws do permit motor vehicle sales of repair and service on the premises. Explain the reason that it's sought in harmony with the general purpose and the intent of the bylaw. The applicant states again that the zoning permits for zoning relief is sought to the applicant as a special permit process. Also concerning the undue traffic congestion and impaired pedestrian safety, while parking and necessary elements and facilities related to the applicant proposal can be accommodated on site, the proposal will not significantly improve any flow of traffic on the property in or out, nor impair any pedestrian safety. The property suitable for the proposed use, the applicant's proposed use, to the premises is a small 10-car used motor vehicle sale and motor vehicle service repair facility with all parking and other elements and the facilities to accommodate on site. Will have no hazard possessed to the neighborhood or create a nuisance hazard affecting the safety and welfare of the public. With that, this has gone to the planning board.
Can we do it 15 cars or 10?
I think you're Mr. Chairman, I believe you're reading a draft that had been sent in prior to the new plan being created.
This is dated September 23rd.
Is that one signed or unsigned?
It's unsigned.
Yeah, there should be a signed one.
So you're looking for 10?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Shown on the existing, on the new plan. We didn't have the plan yet.
It's the August 21st plan, right?
The application attached to the plans.
Okay.
The August 11th plan, correct.
All right, so you have, you have Unit 1 Auto Sales. Then you have Unit 2 Auto Repair.
Right, they're showing it as gray up in the top. Oh, you're not
I'm looking at the actual letter that's signed by the town planner. Okay. All right, so I'll read the town planner's letter. Now, this is gone from, this is from September 2nd. Okay. They have reviewed this particular petition at their regular scheduled meeting held on 9/2. The board has made a favorable recommendation with the following considerations, that the applicant must update their company name as part of their application. The applicant must submit and update floor plans and when filing their amended site plan application with the planning board. Town planner's letter is attached. Concerning the town letter planner's attachment, they request a special permit to establish a used motor vehicle repair use on the premises. Such vehicle-related use is required a special permit for this board along with the CC zoning district. Specifically, the applicant proposes motor vehicle repair in a two-car garage bay. The zoning compliance to the property needs 16 off-street parking spaces which are provided per the submitted plan. Automotive sales and service facility, just so that we have some clarity. One space per 400 square feet of gross floor area, interior sales and office space, plus two spaces per service bay, plus one space per 5,000 square feet of external display. However, there shall, there shall be a minimum of four spaces. Office pre-existing use was four spaces for 1,000 square feet. It indicates Unit 1 Auto Sales. 192 square feet slash 400 square feet, one space plus four service bays, plus 1,690 square feet of 5,000 square feet, one space equals six spaces. Unit 2 is the automotive repair. Indicates 192 square feet slash 400 square feet, one space plus four service bay spaces equals five spaces. And then there's another Unit 3, four spaces, 1,000 square feet of gross floor area equals five spaces. So the total parking spaces for Unit 1 is five spaces. Unit 1 is five spaces, for Unit 2 is five spaces, for Unit 3 is 16 spaces. They recommend that a failed report be sent off to this board, subject to updating the company name and power of their application. An amended site plan will be required from the planning board subject to an special permit approval. With that, I will move it over to the attorney of the applicant. If you can, you know, you put it up there. Board members, we only have one plan to share here, so I'm sure the attorney will be up on the floor and give us an idea of the update.
Originally, this was
Updated plan is submitted
Correct. I represent, my name's David Burton-Hazard. I represent K&amp;M Auto Sales, Inc. With me is Marcelo Orojo. Marcelo is the principal of K&amp;M Auto Sales. Property is 40 Cape Road. It's located in the highway commercial or CC zoning district. 46,901 square foot parcel on the southerly side of Cape Road. It's improved by an existing 4,200 square foot commercial building. K&amp;M proposes to operate an auto, used motor vehicle sale and used motor vehicle repair business out of a portion of the property. If you look up at this gray section, this is the portion that K&amp;M controls presently pursuant to a written lease with the owner. There's a small 192 square foot office that's shown as Unit 1 on the plan, and then there's a two-bay repair area that is shown. I'm sorry, my eyesight's going. Unit 1 is the repair area. They both say Unit 1.
All right, so what's the rest of the building? How many square feet, I'd say?
That is 1,153 square feet is Unit 2.
Is that currently occupied?
My understanding is it is, and its use is like storage warehouse.
So if that use changes
Then it would be up to whoever proposes
Then it becomes a parking issue.
If, yeah, depending on what they need, it would be up to them to
Right, but if you're already taking all the parking and there's no parking spots left, then that becomes an issue for that particular space. Just, just to bring it up.
Right.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that, Dave?
No, I mean, nothing really seems to be changing with the actual structure itself.
There's no proposed to change, there's no proposed changes to the buildings or the grounds. Everything can be accommodated on-site, including, this, this plan shows 15 displayed.
All right, since we don't have, we don't have one, one plan to share, can you bring that down?
It might be difficult to stop by the snow.
The audience where the
The stop by the snow might be kind of difficult.
display.
Right.
Or there's here and here.
Yeah, my thing is 16 spaces. Where are you gonna put the cars that he's working on?
Originally, this was contemplated as two separate businesses operated by two different entities. Originally closed, and so now we're combining it into one operation by one business entity.
You've got 16 spaces you want. That's gonna be all used cars, right?
That shows, the plan shows 15 display spaces.
Okay, where are the cars that he's working on gonna be?
The cars would be in, presumably inside the building.
They'll all be in the building all the time?
From, from what the engineer is saying, who prepared the plan, the, the necessary requirements for that use are accommodated on-site.
Well, 'cause I'm saying, you can't have, if you're using 15 spaces, you can't have 20 occupied outside.
Space is nine by 18.
Not gonna have the room.
What's the total parking spaces there?
Total? Total? Like with everything or the, the grayed out areas?
Well, the gray, gray area is the display of vehicles, I'm assuming.
That's, that's how, the engineer is showing 15 spaces as display spaces.
And how many additional spaces?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. One, two, three, 10.
11, I believe.
Five, six, seven, eight.
11 parking spaces beyond the display.
Plus 15.
Yes, yeah, there's a total.
I don't see that written up anywhere.
It's on the plan.
It's, yeah, it says it on the plan.
Right. So there's plenty of room. Not to exceed that much.
There's an extra, these are the extra spaces. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And there's two handicap spaces that are shown.
Two handicaps.
Seems to be plenty of them.
How many display cars are we gonna have?
There are, there are 15 spaces here.
Request is for 15 displays.
Yep.
But there's an additional, how many spaces are in there?
11.
11 more.
11 more for repair work and things outside the garage, things of that sort.
26 total.
Can you tell me how, what, what the operating hours are gonna look like?
Mr. Orojo would like to operate between 8 and 6. 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night.
Five days a week or six?
I'm not sure if I'm gonna agree to 6:00 on Saturday.
Okay. I think he wants to operate Monday, seven days a week, is his, is his plan.
Fixing cars seven days a week or sales?
Just the sales.
Well, Sundays would be probably just sales.
Right.
Yeah.
Because
I fixing, I fixing
I think any of us should not be hearing any noise coming out of a repair garage.
I fixing the, I fixing the car Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Saturday, Sunday, just to sell.
And all repair work will take place inside the building.
Inside.
Correct. And if you've been to the property, it's, it's pretty well screened. There's pretty high fences
Yeah, yeah.
And natural screening that sort of surround this building.
Yep. Insulation, never change.
Snow might be a problem. I mean, just, you've got no space for snow.
Mm-hmm.
Are these parking spaces marked now?
They will be.
I believe that they are, but if they aren't
Yeah, we'll make sure they are.
Does the planning board go with that, too?
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, so you basically, is this the gentleman that originally was up on Main Street? Were you originally up on Main Street?
That's correct. For a brief period, he was at, was it 296 Main Street?
All right, so that, that permit's now gonna be gone.
Right, that permit runs with K&amp;M, so if K&amp;M is no longer occupying that space, that permit, that permit's no longer
They drop it off
It's only running to the applicant, it's not running to the
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay. Chris, do you have any questions?
Dave touched, touched it with the snow removal. I'm just, there doesn't seem to be much room back there to get snow in and out of there.
I didn't hear that one. Snow.
There's no snow storage area, and it's one of those things that, snow happens, and if you have vehicles there, you need to put it somewhere. So then you're not gonna be, you're gonna have to move vehicles around.
It's just close to that Cortlandt Street, about back there, but looking at the Google Maps, I just don't know if it's gonna go into, if there's
There's a fence all along.
All along.
Yeah, they're gonna have to remove the snow.
So it would have to be removed from the side or out in one of the display
Right.
Spaces. Put all the snow there, past businesses.
You'd either have I think about like, me and
Well, the snow would need to be removed
Yep.
In order for fire protection and, you know, not running onto other piece of property, of course, and there's a lot of fencing over there.
Yeah, I mean, it's completely surrounded by fencing. And, you know, there's a, it looks like there's a drainage area.
And where it evuts the Plaza next to it, that's a fence there, too?
I believe the, I believe that there's fencing all the way around the park.
Yeah, okay.
It's pretty high, too. Where, where the area that you're talking about on the Cape Road Plaza
Yeah.
There is a, a small stone wall and then a fence on top of that.
Yep. Just thinking, too, like, if, if he has these cars back there, it's pretty secluded. The fence would be ideal to keep people out, too.
And there's like the slats in the trolley, and then there's, and then there's trees and shrubs.
They need some area to store.
So it's, it's pretty well screened from that side.
Plus, there's, there's
There's drainage.
And if there's salt and sand there, that's gonna
There's drainage, but I don't know where the drainage is.
In the front, in between the, the building and Cape Road, there's drainage area.
Is it by the three spots that are
Correct.
Display spots?
The sideways ones, yeah.
Anybody else care to be heard on this application?
I have a question.
Sure. Please state your name, ma'am.
Maria Brock.
Yes.
I'm, I'm at 27 Cortlandt Street. So my concern is the area, because of the area of that property, if you have that many cars there, I just don't want them in the future of thinking of opening a second entrance to, from Cortlandt Street.
Yeah.
As long as they can't do that
This is like, this site plan is locked and sealed, there will not be any additional exit out of the property.
Okay, because it is gonna be a really tight area where
Yep.
It is where all the cars are currently parked.
Right.
They already have cars that are currently parked there.
Right.
So if they're gonna be trying to move cars in the garage and then out of the garage for repairs, then they might have an issue.
Yeah, this is a site plan, planning board, site plan approval project. Whatever we do is subject to the planning board approving the whole layout and concerning all the parking. There's only one entrance in and out, and as you know, you've been living there for a while. There was a lot of heavy vehicles over there before.
And they, yeah.
There'll be less, there'll probably be less traffic now than there was before in that, in that parking lot.
Oh, I mean, we weren't concerned with the traffic coming in because it is, you know, commercial property over there, so, you know, as long as all the activity stays on Cape Road on
Exactly correct.
It's all fenced in.
It's all fenced in, and that's the only curb cut
Well, it's fenced in, but they
That's the only curb cut that is approved is from 140 Cape Road. They're not putting another entrance in, and they're not gonna
And, and the display vehicles aren't gonna be moving there.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there'll be, there'll be 10, 12, 15 display vehicles that stay there.
They just sit there and
They'll be sitting there, car sales.
And so what type of service are they gonna be
Automotive repair.
Yeah, but like, just basic oil changes?
Brakes, probably, rotors, you know, that type of stuff.
Warranty work for any of
Warranty work for the cars.
Yes.
There'll be no repair work on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yep.
That'll be, that'll be, that'll be car sales on Saturday and Sunday. Now, it doesn't mean that they may have to bring a car into the garage to adjust something from a car sale, but usually that happens on a Monday when they pick up the car.
And just hopefully that they stick with the hours of operation.
If there's, if you notice that there's a problem with the hours of operation, you get ahold of us at the legal department or
Building Commission.
Building Department.
Building Commission.
And we will enforce it. Okay?
There won't be any body work, right?
No, there won't, no, because it's not gonna be allowed. That's probably, that'll be probably the decision to be no body work.
There's no equipment like that in the
Yeah. Anybody else care to be heard? So this is my opinion. We, we know the site's kind of on the tight side, so currently, right now, this shaded area is 15 car packed. My opinion, these three spaces here get removed, and that'll help with some snow storage in that location, which will mean it'll bring down the car display areas to 12. That's one point that I wanted to bring up. The next point would be would be absolutely no automotive parts, tires, in the parking lot at all, nor any repairs being allowed within the parking lot. As far as the striping is concerned, all striping will have to be updated, maintained, and when I say maintained, if the stripes go away in a year, they will have to be restripped. Handicap parking needs to be done according to the regulations, and currently, I'm seeing one. If planning board wants two, that will be the decision of the planning board. Automotive repair hours will, will run from 8 to, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Nothing after 6:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday, there shall be no repairs. If the applicant wants to come back in and feels the need that they need to have repair work done on a Saturday, then they would have to come back to this board to request something along the line of 8:00 to 1:00 or 8:00 to 2:00. But currently, right now, we're gonna keep it at no repairs on Saturday and Sunday, car sales only. Snow removal, as I indicated, my suggestion would be to remove those three car display lots, so there's enough room for storage of snow, and if it gets to a level of too high, the snow's gotta be removed from the property.
Yeah.
Other than that, it's also gonna be predicated on the planning board's site plan approval I suggest and strongly suggest if the, if the applicant, this is running to the applicant only What's that? This, this is running to the applicant only. The, the building department and legal, we need to have two phone numbers so that if something happens on a weekend, someone can be reached. So we'd like to have cell phone numbers to two, whether that's a supervisor in the garage when you're not on-site and vice versa. Okay? That would be it. So that's my recommendation. Board members have any others, please let me know.
My initial thought is I agree with everything except for those three spots. The reason being is I think those are closest, if, if we wanna get rid of three spots and minimize it to 12, those three could probably be seen better from the street as to what he has for vehicles for sale.
You could, you could
In place of the, maybe we can just remove the ones next to the building, but if your concern is the snow removal, I understand that.
Oh, I understand the aspect of the notability and be able to actually see those cars.
Those
Coming down 140, I would think the first three cars in a row is what they're gonna see.
Yeah.
That, that's just my opinion when I'm looking at 140 and look in. The first three spaces and that stacking of eight or seven, those are the three they're gonna see. If we leave those three displays, there's no place to store the snow.
Mm-hmm. I, I understand. That was, that was just my one thing, but if we're concerned, which we should be, about the snow removal, then that's fine with me. Unless the
Do you have a preference?
Is there, is there room to the side of the three spaces that Mr. Chairman is speaking about for depositing snow?
Well, that's up, again, if, if you feel that the three spaces I wanna remove, that that's critical for your visionary aspects for traffic, then we gotta remove three spaces in order to compensate that. So saying that, would you rather take the three spaces that are out of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9?
No, that's
You wanna remove three there? Because what's gonna happen is you're gonna be parking cars there.
Dave, is there enough room, if you back out, out of that, those overhead doors, if there's three cars parked at that corner?
There's doors right, there's right here.
Do you even have room, if those three cars are there, do you have room to get out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
So maybe that could be the three spots. If, if you don't have room, those three spots are useless.
That's fine for me.
Well, you're certainly not gonna put snow down in this area.
It would be less intrusive than a vehicle.
Yeah, it very well could be, but then you're jamming it on the corner.
You're only talking three spaces there.
Right.
We getting a big slow stomp on the way?
It's gonna pile up quick.
Yeah, come on.
So you have a preference?
I think, you know, if he had a preference, it would be in that stack of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 spaces that run along next to the dumpster. He'd prefer to keep the three that are closest to the actual building and the three that you have down there.
Dave, unless, unless we provide him with an option
Oh, I see, I see, I, okay.
You need to take away three spaces or two, so
No.
Maybe three?
You got the dumpster, you got the dumpster location next to
Three spaces is probably
Unless we provide him with, with an option to lose the three, or he needs to remove the snow from the property when it snows.
You know what we can do? We can make this kind of simple. So I'm gonna mark this on the plan as
Where's the dumpster?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 retail car displays. We will remove 1, 2, and 3 for now.
1, 2, and 3 are the ones closest to the building?
Yeah, 1, 2, and 3 next to the dumpster.
Okay, yep, yep, I think that's what he would
If we remove those three, that'll give him room for snow. If you come back in a year and saying
So you say take these
That area is working fine with the snow, or it's not working fine, can we move the location to someplace else?
Yeah.
I don't think the board would have any problem coming back and reworking
Yeah.
That area to make it work.
And this would be his preference, if he's gonna lose spaces to, for it to be those three?
Yeah, that should be fantastic.
So, so if, if his plan, I'll be, I'll be signing his plan, so if that's the case
So we'll lose spots 1, 2, and 3.
We will be, we will lose, we, there'll be no displays in Bays 1, 2, and 3 of the retail sales here. Okay?
Can you, can you show us down here when you're talking about?
No, you're gonna have to look at it from here.
Okay.
Is it? You all set?
Pulling up. You asked what you want?
1, 2, and 3.
Oh, yeah, I thought he's
Because the dumpster's right there, too.
Right. That's right next to the dumpster.
And that, that does make sense.
Yeah.
Everybody heard the conditions that I
I make the motion, we accept the young conditions.
All right, so there's a motion based on the conditions that were outlined, so it'll go from 15 spaces to 12 spaces, and spaces 1, 2, and 3 for the retail car sales will be eliminated. If they feel they need to come back and maybe work out a different plan, that is fine. Motion by John Mastroianni, second by Bob.
Yep.
All those in favor? Ruthie?
Aye, yes.
All set?
All set.
That's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck, and I hope this location works out for you.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Once this, once the decisions come out, I just want to review.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if you listen or not.
No, we didn't listen at all.
No, she did.
He's a big part of that, so he's sort of.
Okay. On to the next one. Pass that down to. Okay, do we have the applicant for 12 West Street here? Come on up, please. And you, Hilma? Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Cartagena.
Cartagena?
Cartagena.
Cartagena, okay. Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, this is on the application of Hilma Cartagana, 12 West Street Milford, for a special permit relief pursuant to Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a parcel of land located on the southernly side of West Street of Milford, shown as assessment sheet 48, lot 348. The owner numbered as 12 West Street. The special permit relief is sought in order to permit the applicant to keep chickens on the subject lot as residential animals within the meaning of the zoning bylaw. Reviewing the application, currently this property has a single-family home on it. He's looking to do residential chickens in the backyard. It's a non-commercial use, keeping foul. By the way, for residents, the chickens are allowed based on a special permit from the zoning board. They're looking to build a new chicken coop, materials that will be used, treated plywood, lumber, chicken wire for ventilation, nails, hinges, latches, next roofing, shingles, what have you. They're looking for six chickens. The special permit is to be established and maintained in a covered chicken coop on the property, keeping domestic hens for fresh egg production. The proposed coop would adhere to all regulations outlined on the bylaw, including site limitations, proper animal practices, the minimum, and nuisance or impact to the neighborhood. So just as board members, so board members are familiar, there are a couple of things that the applicant will need to adhere to. And one of those are the town of Milford's regulations on keeping chickens. Have you, are you familiar with that regulation?
We took a brief edit when we got the package to our mail.
So you actually reviewed the bylaws for chickens, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you also, let me get through the town planners' recommendation first. The planning board on September 16th recommended favorable action on the special permit with recommended conditions that the coop may require setback. By the way, is there a site plant here somewhere? Anybody got this?
Yep.
So in any event, they requested a special permit to allow residential animals on the property. And the zoning bylaw does provide such uses by the ZBA, the special permit, are a zoning district. And the legal address, as we know, is 12 West Street. Specifically, the proposal for residential animal, six hens for personal use, only is a non-commercial entity. The proposal includes construction of a coop on the property using standard materials for coop construction. All relevant zoning requirements appear to be met. The coop location may be within the side and rear setbacks. And the planning board should divert to the ZBA for its jurisdiction over the matter. They recommend that it be fought over to the ZBA as long as it applies by all rules and regulations. In addition to that, you also have a childcare company, correct? On the property?
Not yet.
Daycare?
Not yet.
So you've applied for it?
Yes.
You have to go through the state process, is that correct?
Yes.
Where are you on that?
We haven't started yet.
Have you, has the state approved you yet?
No. We haven't started the process.
Oh, you haven't started?
No, we haven't started yet.
Oh, okay, all right. Do you know how many children you're looking for?
Six.
Six?
Yeah.
So what we will need to do is those two areas would need to be separated. You can't have an open yard with chickens and hens and then have children in that same yard with all the stuff that the chickens lay on the ground.
Yeah, so it's already separated, we fenced, the yard is fenced, separated.
Well, the engineered plan is not an engineered plan showing any fencing.
Right.
So this is a mortgage plot plan. Your requirement for a special permit needs to have an engineered plan, which shows exactly what is currently on the property. So if you've got a fence coming across here, it should be on the property.
On the plan.
Right on the plan. This is just a mortgage plan, so you didn't follow what you were supposed to follow when you applied for the special permit. And I know it's going to cost money to get an engineer out there to be able to do a plan because the chicken coop that's currently you have on this plan back here doesn't conform to side and rear setbacks. So that would have to be moved.
Okay.
Use that because it doesn't conform if you're now going down the road asking for chickens.
Okay.
So I know it's a little bit expensive just to get chickens. But if we don't have the proper documentation on the engineered plan, it's difficult for us to be able to provide a permit for it. Because we can't tell where anything is separated with any fencing.
Okay.
So I just wanted to bring that up. Is anybody here on this application? On this particular application? So my recommendation is, and again, this is your choice, what's currently on the property is not on this plan. Because it has to show where all the fencing is. Specifically, you've now got a daycare, a childcare coming in. We don't know where that separates from the chicken coop. We're going to need to know that or an engineer is going to need to put it on a plan so that we know. So what we can do is. Yeah, and actually where the location of the coop is. I don't see an issue with this, providing that we get the right plan. I'm more concerned about the children and your new daycare, which I hope you got. Usually the state's pretty quick about that. But also the designation between where the kids are going to play versus where you want to put the chickens.
The state will have something to say about that. The state will have something to say about that.
I'm not sure. So do you know what level you are at the state right now?
I haven't done either.
Level zero.
Zero.
Have you applied?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
We haven't started yet.
Would you rather get that done first? I think that's the important part.
So Dave, this is a certified plot plan, but it doesn't show the designated area.
Right.
It doesn't show anything.
It just doesn't show the fenced-in area.
So we would like to focus on this.
Did you have this done for you recently?
We hired a land surveyor.
Yeah, this is August 28th.
This is going to stand.
Oh, yeah.
This is certified.
Can you, what we can do is we can continue this and have him put the fencing of what's on the property now.
Okay, yeah.
And then maybe this coop's got to come over a little bit away from, because you're supposed to be somebody.
They got to conform to setbacks.
Yeah, you just have to, he knows.
Right.
The engineer knows you have to conform to the setback. So that would be my recommendation is have the engineer put your fencing in. We'll continue this for the next hearing. Contact your engineer, and if he has any questions, he can call us. But we need to know where all your fencing is so that we can properly be able to help you.
David, I need to say this. I don't know if the fencing is a requirement for us to be concerned about. Because we don't know, there's not a childcare center there yet.
Yeah, but we don't have everything on the ground, engineer-wise.
But why put a fence up?
No, there's already a fence there. We don't have it on the plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to put a fence there.
No, no, no. It's already there.
I was confused, too.
Okay, we want to see it on the plan.
All right, I got it.
This was done August 28th. So that's what I'm going to do.
A big boy, I'll take it.
So we'll continue this to give you time to have your engineer, wherever the fence is.
Thank you.
So that we know where it is on the plan. So with that.
Can I make one recommendation? I think you should talk to the state first to see what you need to do regarding the chicken buildings. My daughter-in-law has a place, so I notice a lot of restrictions. Before you get too involved with. That would be my suggestion.
And that's a good suggestion.
Is this plan certified?
Yes. Yeah, but they just didn't put.
They didn't put the fence. They basically had a.
Continue it because of the fence, though? Correct. You think we need to continue it because of the fence?
We don't know where it is.
So first of all, two things, Bob.
Yeah.
The current plan shows the proposed chicken coop is already in violation of the side and rear setbacks.
We know that.
That's on the plan. What we don't know is what they're supposed to be submitting is everything that's currently on the ground so we can provide the permit. The fence is not there. And it's a simple change for the engineer. I just want to give her the opportunity and the board to know exactly where everything is on the ground so that we'll be able to move forward with it.
Stand corrected again.
Right. So I'm looking for the continuation sheet. There it is. Okay, so we're going to. Is your engineer pretty responsive in getting back to you?
We'd have to wait like two to four weeks.
Two to four weeks.
That's how long we have to wait.
When's our next hearing?
November 13.
You think you can get him to do this by November 13th?
Yeah, I could give him a call, check their schedule.
Tell him that your hearing is continued until November 13th and you'll need it by then.
Okay.
And if you need an extension, of course, we'll grant you another extension.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I just want to say one thing to what Bobby said. Do we really, do we really need to know where the fence is?
Because the engineered plan has not a complete engineered plan.
Okay.
And that's what we ask for.
That's fine.
I want to be able to give her the opportunity.
How long ago was the fence put in?
Like before, before we started the process.
Before.
Then like in early spring.
Did you say November what?
13.
Way back, right?
Your engineer should have put that on the plate. You paid for him to engineer your lot, you should have done that.
I'll give him a call.
If you have any problems with that engineering.
No.
And where is the fence again?
Don't call us.
Behind the garage?
It's behind the garage, so from the front straight to the back. And then, yeah, in front of the garage, there's a curved fence that blocks the driveway. It's the curb on the driveway. Entrance of the basement to the garage is closed.
Okay, so your motion to continue is 11:13, 25.
I motion.
Motion by Dave, we have a second for it.
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? If you just come up and print and sign this, you'll be good to go.
You can go, you have to stay, though. You have to stay, you have to stay, that's your punishment.
You just can't ask any more questions.
What time?
I'm done. That's it, I'm not going to argue.
You want to go at 6:00 or 7:00?
Are we continuing for 4B?
You don't know that.
Yeah, so it'll probably be 6 o'clock. We convene 11:13 at 6 o'clock. You're not going to get a notification, so make sure you're here. If for some reason you can't make that, call, just call.
What's your name?
Melissa. And then we'll just continue it if you're not ready.
November 6, November 13? November 13 at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, right here.
Thank you.
Thank you. My greens. I have a crazy question.
Oh, God.
How many chickens can be on a property?
Six.
Only six, not 12? I've always heard 12.
Well, if you get two properties.
Whatever the board approves.
Whatever the board approves. Well, you're supposed to have six. That doesn't mean that you don't see 12.
Yes, sir.
We're going to go on the screen, too, but you never know, so.
Traffic guys.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to leave the hearing while stuff is being passed out. Okay. Ready? This is on the continued application.
It's a three-story, this was a three-story, this is over near the neighbors.
Unlimited dividend affiliate WP's acquisitions, Hotwell Place, Elxington. A comprehensive permit pursuant to general laws, Chapter 40B, in relation to 7.8 acre parcel of land located on the northeastern side of East Main Street, owner numbered as 19 East Main. Petition proposed to develop and construct approximately 200 residential units in four buildings. The development will contain a requisite number of low to moderate incomes. A project eligibility letter through Mass Housing in relation to the site on September 5th. From what I understand, I guess there's some updating that was done. Just to remind everyone in the public, any questions you have, feel free, please address it to the board. And we'll try to get any answers that are relative. What I will do at this point, I'll turn it over to the group. Please get us updated based on the last meeting and. Did you guys do sidewalks or anything, interview anybody?
We did, yeah.
Why don't you explain to me what happened between the last hearing and here?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Lambert, managing director of Wood Partners, here on behalf of the applicant WP's acquisitions LLC, here with our design and legal team and other members of my team here. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to do just that. I'm going to start with an update of what we've done since we were last in front of the board. And then I'll turn it over to Phil Cordero and he'll walk through the details of the plan.
Is this the update that was brought to us?
Yes.
This is the recent update?
Phil, is that right? What he's got, is this the most recent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we submitted that last week to be discussed here this evening.
This is what the modifications from the last hearing, is that correct?
Yes, it was just, it was a single sheet of the overall plan set because we really wanted to. I'm sorry, for the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. We wanted to reflect the layout-based changes to the board and then we'll obviously supplement that with the full design information. Does anyone from the board have any technology insight to turn the television on?
Turn it on and off?
Well, on, but the right setting is.
Well, why don't you bring up?
Hey, that's not it.
I don't think that's anybody here that has.
Yes.
It had to be our IT department and they're all gone, so.
We'll do it the old-fashioned way.
All right, so let's, you continue with the update of what happened since the last hearing so that the board's updated and the residents are updated for the bodies.
Absolutely. So since the last hearing, I think first and foremost, we obviously heard comments from the board and from members of the community at the meeting that we took, you know, detailed notes on and brought those back to, you know, to the design board. But I think most importantly, we had multiple meetings with neighbors. We had three different meetings with neighbors onsite at their properties. And we'll go through the.
If I may, so what Jim is referring to in terms of meetings with the neighbors, as I understand from the last meeting, there were several, there were many neighbors present. And at the end of the meeting, the neighbors that wanted to be contacted by us were polled and they provided their neighbor, their name. So we had three names on that list of people that wanted to be contacted by us. So those are the folks that Mr. Lambert's referring to.
So, correct. So we had, we had those meetings and we took, obviously.
Most of this was towards the rear of the property?
Prairie Street, and then we also had meetings with a member of Patsy's Lane as well as Gillen.
Okay.
So all three of the streets that surround the project. We then modified the plan, which you see in front of you that we'll go through in detail in a few minutes, based on those conversations. We've also investigated the drainage channel, the head wall, and the water flow patterns on the site, which we're going to go through in more detail shortly as well. And then finally, we had conversations with the water department about the water line redundancy that they had asked us to do going out to Prairie Street. So we've gotten some feedback from them, although not final. We have an ongoing conversation that we can speak to on that.
Is that because they wanted to loop the water?
They wanted to loop the water. And after our meeting onsite with the powers, it was clear that that was going to be a challenge, both for the construction but also just for disruption for the neighbors. And so we had reached out to the water department again subsequently and said, hey, this is going to be tough. You know, is there anything that you might want to reconsider? And that conversation. And that conversation, I think, is still not final, but we had good feedback.
So we've been speaking with Jeff at the water department, and we've got good indication from him that he's comfortable with us doing what's called a double loop, meaning we'll come in off of East Main Street and loop around our site. So both of our connections will be at East Main Street.
To avoid that.
To avoid working through that land. So we don't have 100% sign-off, but he didn't have issue with it in terms of when we presented it back to him as the changed design.
Yeah, it was pretty treacherous. I mean, there was trees, ledge, just visual buffers that would have been disrupted from the neighbor to the retail. And so, you know, we're happy to kind of pivot that approach if the water department, you know, blesses that. So that's what's happened since we met with the board last. On the changes, just high level, which Phil will go through in more detail, we swapped the three-story building that was fronting East Main Street with the one closest to the neighbors to bring down the scale for the neighborhood. We increased the landscape buffer to Prairie Street and to Patsy's Lane's abutters. We modified the parking layout so that we could achieve those changes. We moved the trash enclosure to the eastern boundary away from the neighbors, which was a concern that was brought up at the last meeting. And then we added a bus shelter near the entrance to the site. That's sort of high level, but we'll, we were planning to show you on the screen those details, I think we'll have to show you on the physical paper here, but Phil's going to walk you through those changes in particular in more detail. Phil?
Any last chance?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is it okay if I present the plan that you hung up for everybody?
Take your microphone with you. Please.
Thank you very much. And if it's okay with you, I'll present this way so everybody can see. So what Jim has identified in terms of the changes that were made on the plan, I just want to point them out so the board understands where they've taken place. The building swap was the building located directly along East Main Street with what we call Building D. So A and D have now inverted positions. So this is a four-story building, and this is a three-story building to lower the massing of the building closest to the neighbors, you know, on the backside of Prairie, Burnin' and Patsy's Lane. It brings that scale down. The bus shelter that he referred to, we did add it. It is entirely located on our property, so it's not within the right-of-way, because it does have to be located on private property. But we do have the sidewalk connection that any children or adults that may gather in that space would simply be out of the rain, out of the elements, and simply go out to East Main Street to catch a bus through there. The focus of our site meetings, so we met with, again, several folks around the perimeter of the project, starting along Prairie Street. We met with the powers who are located here, and we heard their concerns, which were really twofold, and I'm paraphrasing, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but our summary obviously was proximity to them and potential disruption if we were to install the water line through Prairie Street. So circling back to Jim's notes about the water line, the idea of the water line was a connection through East Main and would ultimately wrap back out to Prairie Street and would come through this piece of land that has frontage. So in there, we did the field visit. We have several large outcroppings, we have several large diameter trees, we have roots that likely go onto the driveway to the powers, so the disruption that Jim spoke about is real. So that's what took us to the water department and said, you know, we'd really like to preserve this through there. And as I mentioned with Jeff, he seems to be on board with that, and we'll finalize those discussions as we keep going, hopefully with support of the board here this evening. The other element that we heard, the prior plan, we do have the additional parking located in the satellite lot, as I'll call it, so sort of a little isolated from the project. We had that parking field to maximize our parking count at the request of the board. The perimeter of that went very close to the property line, where we would have had a retaining wall because of the way the topography drops off out behind the powers' property. We would have had a retaining wall through there and the parking directly against that retaining wall. Now, we would have had a six-foot-high fence atop there, so we felt we were doing best efforts to make sure our headlight glare, our sight lighting, our noise was really downplayed against the powers' property. But what we heard from that site visit is really they wanted to see some additional through there. The other benefit that we had about being allowed on the property and reviewing it with them, there are several large diameter trees that really straddled the property line between our property of interest and the powers. We didn't align exactly where the property was through there in terms of where the trees are, but best efforts to preserve those trees, in our opinion, and hopefully the powers would agree with that assertion, is that it would really improve the buffering that would take place between the two properties.
Those pine trees, by the way?
They're not pine.
Norway spruce.
And we're going to take her word for it, she knows what they are, Norway spruce. Through there, they're very old growth, they're very tall. So what we've been able to do is that we've reconfigured the parking massing, we have pulled it away from the property line about 15 feet. And what that affords us is it's a very valuable 15 feet in, more so than just the number alone, in that first and foremost, those trees can now be preserved. Number two, the retaining wall that would have otherwise wrapped around that area, we no longer need that because we can topographically tie into the natural topography. So what you would see off of the back of the parking field through there would be a natural slope, which we can add some grass and vegetation to to really soften that up and blend into the landscape. It would be, we have it graded right now at about a three to one. So it's, we can cut the grass, we can plant on it, it's entirely maintainable, it doesn't need to be supported by any artificial means, no riprap, no slope stabilization, it can just be a rolled-over grass slope through there. And then, in addition to that, what will still remain is the fencing, six-foot-high privacy fencing, you know, final color and materials obviously to be determined through further discussion. But that fencing will remain and be located adjacent to the property line, and again, for the sole purpose of headlight glare, parking lot lighting, trash, noise, debris, to make sure the elements adjacent to that property are really well-protected. So that was our focus through there. That same benefit, we had occasion, forgive me, I forget the gentleman's name that owns the Plaza. He joined us during the sidewalk with the powers. He wasn't on the list, but he joined. That property would also benefit from the same situation. We will have pulled that away. As we move around northwesterly to the site, we had the McCormex, who were gracious enough to host us at their property to show us the site. The board might recall, with the different building in place, it was a different length, and we had a retaining wall with parking on the north side of that building, where our field visit with the McCormex was really to show them where the limit of work would have been and what their observances would be relative to a retaining wall. With the adjustment in the building, we also were able to relocate some parking, and we were able to shrink wrap that retaining wall in towards the building to preserve the natural vegetation in that corner of the site as well. Now, natural vegetation, some of that is, there's a large piece of ledge out there, so the neighbors are fully aware of that. But the vegetative buffer that would have otherwise been cut down can now also stay. So what was primarily a 10-foot separation to the face of the wall on the prior plan is now about 50 to 60 feet measurement, so we've moved it back quite a bit, again, all with the goal of preserving everything that's out there today.
How high is the wall?
So right in the, right in the area where I'm showing is only about two to three feet. It does get larger as you wrap around towards Barini Street, and then as you wrap around towards the back of the project. The ledge is what's holding the grade up high, so we don't need the wall at that location, but as you wrap around it, the grade drops off and we need to wall some of that off. Max height on the wall, though, is six to eight feet, six to eight feet. Ultimately, designed by a structural engineer who have fall protection, we need to get a building permit for it, so we obviously have to go through a formal design on it, so it's not, it's not simply a landscape wall, if you will. As I continue onward, at the northerly portion of the site, the other comment that we heard from one of our neighbors, and she was, again, gracious enough off of Gillen Street to host us on her property, we listened to her concern, which was the loading and unloading of dumpsters, which apparently she hears from the rest of the neighborhood. So best efforts to deal with that situation for us was to relocate that from here to this location. So it's deeper into our site, obviously shielded by our buildings, and the buildings themselves will offer some buffering on the sound. Obviously, our neighbor to the east is Quarry Plaza, you know, so we're not worried too much about the concern there, is that that operation will be the same. But we were able to take that element away and address that concern. So I think we've moved at about 400 feet southerly from that property.
So in that northern section, you made the parking over there, you've got snow storage there, what's the elevation on that section?
So that is an area where we would have that wall height of about eight to 10 feet. So the elevation of the terraced parking will be up, and then the wall will support us, because on the backside of that, we do have a wetland system, which will be at a lower grade. So surround, so on that wall also will be that same six-foot-high fence that I was referring to against our neighbors here on the westerly corner. We do have that elsewhere on the property, again, shielding noise, headlight, dust, disruption, et cetera. So that way, everything is contained within the site. So while we were on site, so those are the site plan changes. What I wanted to sort of segue into is just some ancillary-based discussion from not only our site visits with the neighbors, but also some follow-up comments for the board, and then I can address any additional technical comments that may arise. We heard from the neighbors their general concern about what was happening in the waterway, the drainage ditch between the two properties. So we made sure that we went out to review that from end to end. And those familiar with the site know, we have a culvert under East Main Street where the water continues moving in a southerly direction. And then a couple of hundred feet northerly of that is sort of a sluice way that was constructed many years ago as part of the Plaza. It's a constriction in the water flow, so it channelizes the full-form water through the headwalls and then channelizes it towards, towards the outlet configuration, towards the culvert. And what did we find out there, obviously, I don't think it's any surprise to anybody, we found a lot of trash, we found debris, we found some old mechanical cars, we found a lot of empty bottles. None of it was impeding the flow, per se, but certainly that area could benefit from a cleanup to make sure that water is flowing as intended through there. So the waterway, the ditch, straddles the property line between the quarry and this property. So the ownership, we don't have full clarity on who would have otherwise been responsible, but I think an opportunity presents itself that as part of this project, we can do some mitigative cleanup along the length of this property to make sure that some of that debris is removed, or not some of, make sure that debris is removed.
That was primitive, we must have some documentation when that was, Fafford did that shopping, huh?
Well, it's well over 20, 20 years ago. I don't know if there are any particular permits out from this board.
Well, as far as the conditions of how to maintain that, now RJ Kelly owns that site, and that should fall on them along with...
We do, we do have to be careful, because it is conservation land, it is within a BVW. So anything we do, as well-supported as it could be from this board and the public, we do need to make sure we route through conservation and make sure we're doing it by the book. So we did go through there, and that, those were our observations and our conclusions in terms of, you know, how we can make the area better, sort of as part of this.
So on the increased flow, that will be able to handle any increased flow?
So increased flow is, with all due respect, Mr. Chair, not the correct term. And the reason I'll...
I'm not a fool.
No, but I do want to paint a picture, and I was going to now segue into a little bit of a drainage discussion, going to keep it high level. Unfortunately, we don't have the slides, so I'm going to do my best to recreate it by waving my hand. We are relegated under the bylaws and the Wetlands Protection Act.
The board has those slides in their hand.
You have the slides, perfect.
I'll be right in the book.
Oh, thank you. So there is one, there are a couple of mass slides in there showing our aerial, if I may. It is pages seven and eight. Pages seven and eight. Page seven is our pre-existing condition.
Right.
And the pre-existing condition, and what I want to reinforce to the board and ultimately to the public, is really what's happening out here today relative to water movement. The site generally splits in half, and the easterly portion flows into the drainage ditch, the westerly portion flows towards Prairie, through the neighbors, through that whole area. So the designation of the areas that you can see on those slides, the red dots are what we refer to as study points, design points, which is where the water is ultimately flowing, and the red arrows dictate the direction that that's going. Now, those familiar with the site, if you look on the imagery, you'll see the large gray massing. Those are our survey outcroppings, based on our survey. So when the water falls from the sky and lands on the ground, it is very limited uptake of the water on this land. Now, there are some trees out there, it does absorb some of it, but the ledge outcroppings that are visible at the surface and certainly just underneath it, we have a lot of water runoff that flows east and west to the site. Now, when I say, Mr. Chair, with all due respect about increased flow, we're mandated by the stormwater regulations that the water leaving the site under a build condition cannot exceed the water leaving the site under the present-day condition. So if the board is kind enough to flip to page eight on the slideshow, you will see the same red circles which indicate the design points, the study points, those don't change. Those are our limited areas, and we need to make sure our calculations are equal to or less than the design calculations. So everything within the brown-colored shaded area is our site. It is within the limits of the curbing, and everything that falls in there, we will capture and collect, and it will go through a water quality treatment device for sediment removal filtration. And then it goes into an underground chambered system for storage, and those are designated by the blue and white boxes, the irregular shape. We hold that water, we release some of it into the ground if possible, but we slowly release it back into the natural water course. So the red arrows will then designate all of our water flow, will then ultimately drain to that drainage ditch, and then ultimately onto East Main Street, but in a controlled fashion, so we don't add increased flow. And what ultimately yields here, if you look at the plan closely, is when I was showing the drainage divide approximately here, this much goes here, this much goes there, once we've done our collection, those mass drainage areas are reduced to slivers. So on either side of our developed area on the slide, you will notice a blue sliver on the left, which is about an 85% reduction of the water that's going towards Prairie and the neighbors. And then the red area on the right side is about an 80% reduction of the water that will naturally flow to the drainage ditch. Everything in between there, we will control, we will treat, we will handle, and we're relegated, obviously, not only by conditions of this board, but the Wetlands Protection Act and the stormwater management standards in terms of how we move that water throughout the site.
Okay.
Okay? Now, in the slideshow package, not on the board, we also have a detailed landscape plan, and we've also included a before and after, a prior plan and a current plan. As you were flipping through, you've probably encountered those. As you move towards the back of the slideshow, we have two cross-sections, and those are the cross-sections that we discussed with the board at the last meeting. And those sections are drawn...
Very helpful.
Thank you. So those are drawn from the McCormex property through the site, and then also through the powers' property into the site. And it shows the relationship of the existing homes, the proposed buildings, the grade change between the two. But the key takeaway point is the areas that we have noted as limit of work and the treeed areas that we are preserving, so the existing vegetation that's going to stay out there. And then the inclusion of not only the retaining walls, but the six-foot-high fencing provides that screening that we think will be of benefit to our neighbors. And the actual drawn lines of the sections are lower right-hand corner of each slide, just so the board has references to the imagery cross-section that you're seeing.
Do you have any extras of these? I'd like to be able to, just something you can see the cross...
If you want to share. Yeah, I apologize, we intended to have...
We'll make them available to, if anybody else...
Versus the parking area side view?
Would you kind of...
That may help, be helpful for visionary aspect.
We apologize, obviously technologically speaking.
Those are on 10 and 11.
Another one? All right.
Someone can take this to...
To anybody. We'll, we'll make sure we get a, we'll get a copy to Melissa, so it's on the file, it'll be available to everybody.
Can you load this up?
On the website, please. In the future, too, if you want to use that, this is future meetings, you can contact in advance, we can contact the IT department, and that can be all set up, but the IT department's gone for the day, so.
We apologize, we will take care of that the next time. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And just for clarity, wherever this project goes, we're not doing wood fencing. They don't last long.
So we hear that, Mr. Chairman. Where I'll respectfully add a note for the board's consideration, what we did here from the neighbors that we met with is the stark nature potentially of vinyl fencing and that some alternate materiality might be of interest to them, but I'll leave it for discussion.
If you have questions, please present it to the board.
All right. Why don't you go ahead? Keep going.
That's the conclusion. I'm here to answer questions that the board or the public has once you open it up.
First of all, thank you for doing the cross-section. I think that may help a little bit specifically for the residents when you can see a top of a home, top of the roof of a home, and then what the visual aspect is looking into Probably could have used something towards the rear, but that's fine. That's Patsy Lane. And that's Prairie. We don't have anything from Gillon on here, right?
Mr. Chairman, we do not. There's quite a bit of horizontal separation from Gillon, and we have a large wetland system through there. So I think the effectiveness of a cross-section may be lost over that distance.
So you can load this first? Yes, of all. Okay. Questions from the board, first of all?
Did you reduce the parking from your original proposal, bringing everything in?
No. So through the reconfiguration, we've been able to preserve the parking.
Same.
Yeah. And if I may reach over, we're at a 1.89 parking ratio.
Anything?
I don't have anything right now.
Chris?
Nothing.
Bobby? Mark? Okay. Anybody care to speak? Please provide your name, where you live, and everything through the board, and we'll try and get as many answers. We're going to start.
Stand up, please.
Yes?
Janice Marshall, Westerly. So I have just had a question. Looking at this, okay, this is page eight.
Sorry, what page?
Eight.
Page eight. The proposal, drainage plan. So am I getting this right now? So everything can go, I think you said westerly?
Why don't we do this? Do you want to put this up?
Can I write west?
It's going to be, it's going to go...
If, to the chair, if it's okay to answer it, easterly.
There you go.
Move down here.
So can I ask this question? So, so the side...
He's going to address, that's what he's going to address. He's going to go right off that for you.
All right.
So go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead with your question.
So you're draining from the property into that channel, right?
Yes.
And then down here, you moved this drainage, because wasn't it just coming out straight and now it's going to go into that channel, too?
So it, so the drainage here that you're referring to was always intended to discharge into the ditch behind building two.
Over there.
Here, over here.
Building two.
This building right here.
Yeah. This natural water right now that's draining towards both of them.
Yeah.
Right.
My question is...
Thank you.
Can I have one about that, too? True. I'm on Hillis, Prairie Street. Can I just come over and show you? I already have two subhubs, okay? So I live over here.
Thank you.
So what is this? I mean, I don't, I'm already too low. Two subhubs and I have drainage in my basement, so I can't take any more water.
That's a high groundwater area.
Sure. So we do know that it's a high groundwater area. The drainage that we're putting in is reflective of the high groundwater. To your question, this area right here...
Yes.
Is simply a piece of our property that connects out to Prairie. This is, there's no development in it. There's nothing in it. This was the area that we were formally going to do a water line through it, but we've taken that back through conversation with DPW, with the Water Department.
Next?
Anna Power, Nine Thirteenth Street. So I do appreciate when I have a cut next to my house. And we know that I'm very protective of my trees. Now, with this new slope, what is the difference from the property line and curb cut? Is that four feet?
You don't have a curb cut on yours.
Well, it's his curb. Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I guess curb, sorry.
So I assume, Mr. Chair, you're referring to the curb at the back of our parking field to the property line. That's 15 feet.
Okay.
15.7 feet.
There you go. Thank you.
That's from like my trunk to, or the property line, wishy-washy to the back curb of the...
The property line to the back of curb.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess my main concern, because you saw how large the trees are, typically in my field, we say a so, a so below for the root system. I would like to entertain maybe having a certified arborist coming out to see how much tree protection and root protection we need to do for that. Just because I am petrified that compaction and something of these roots will get in harm's way and take down a very large tree. You know, in my background, I am in landscape construction, and so we do have large trees on properties I work with, and we usually go 35 to 50 feet from the trunk, including the canopy. So that's staking, protection, make sure no loaders, no grading, no subgrading, nothing can go near those.
So is your property surveyed to show where the trees are now?
In terms of the drawing, right here, these larger trees on page 10 are my doorway spruce right now.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
So on page 10 of this handle?
Okay. All right. Yep?
And the large tree to the left where it says PL?
Yep.
Those are the large existing doorway spruce.
Right. But what I'm asking is, your trees on your property right now, is there a survey showing exactly where they are on your property?
Just on the property line.
So it's on the property line?
Correct.
Right on the line?
Correct.
So is some of it on the other's property line?
It's, that must have been there 100 years, so...
You don't know.
I don't know. And that's, and they're probably 12 feet around, so they are pretty large.
Question, can your survey team identify where those trees are on, if they're on your site?
We could, yes. When we visited the Powers' property, which has been there for a while, there were some concrete markers that were there on-site. Not bounds, they were vertical concrete markers that we believe somebody had installed as property markers.
Right.
And they came not only up the finger, but they actually came along the rear of the Powers' property line. So it gave us a pretty good idea, and those trees sort of straddled those lines. But locating them could be done to tell you exactly which side of the line they're on.
So from your survey standpoint, you could probably find whether those trees are even all on her property or on your property?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Or a combination of both?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
It may be important to both of you.
Yeah. Just because they're massive and the roots are massive, and that's why we were...
But we don't know exactly where they are on your property or their property, correct?
Our major, correct. It's kind, they're right on the line.
So we need to identify that.
So when they came to visit us, you know, it's hard to tell, you know? And then with the idea of an eight-inch main going through, that was going to destroy the root system.
Yep.
And you can't take a machine and cut up half of the tree's roots, it's just impossible.
But they're not going through there now.
I'm sorry, what?
But they're not going through there now.
Correct. After this...
Right.
Now, they're not going through there.
So the key point is to make sure that those trees...
Are not impacted in any way.
Well, no.
Oh, no, I can't say impacted.
Where they are on the property.
But we also don't want to drive a loader over that, subgrade for the driveway, the parking lot.
Right. But we don't know if the tree is half on your property and half on their.
It's a very...
How about the root system under?
Oh, I understand that, but we have no property, there's no engineered property line on her side to determine where those are on the site.
So what I'm just saying is...
Well, I think it needs to be looked at, yeah.
They cut up, you know, if something gets impacted, the machine, a loader runs over...
You can kill the root.
They kill the root. And then who's responsible for the tree? Am I going to look at a dead tree? I mean, and that would cut the safety hazard. Like telephone poles are beautiful trees. I'd like to see in place...
It's a what-if. You know, we need to identify where the tree is.
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to locate the trees.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Let's get it, let's get that area so that we know exactly where these trees, and I'm sure the roots go pretty far.
Of course.
Okay. That's great. Next question? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm McCormack, for Patsy Lane. I have sort of a similar problem with the trees. We are on the property line. We had discussed it when you guys came out. So I just have a question about that new proposed area. This one? This one right here on page five? Yeah. And appreciate you moving everything back to the new room. Is this going to be the existing landscape up there? So...
Let me just...
I'm on page five.
Page five. Let me just put it up for everybody.
Just looking at that new area.
So, if I may, your question here is, say one more time, please?
I just, there are...
Oh, sure, sure.
I just wanted to know, this area here, Phil, right where my house is?
Yeah.
Is this going to be the existing trees and rock and stuff?
Yes.
You're still blasting the rock?
So what we, so what she's, what she's asking for clarity is, out behind the area between our property and the McCormack's property, there's some vegetation, and then she has a large, there's a large boulder that's on our land. So the 50 or so feet that we've been able to now preserve by shrink wrapping everything towards the building, the vegetation can stay, so that would remain. The rock, we have to assess. And the reason we have to assess the rock is some of it does have to be removed. And what we don't know as we're here today is whether we can remove a piece of the rock, fracture it off, or if the rock itself has to come down, and then the method of which we would alter the rock, whether, and we discuss this on her property, but just repeating it for the board, is, you know, if we were, if we had to bring in a hammer, we would chip the rock down with a machine. If we had to blast that, then there are blasting protocols we would have to file in accordance with the state marshal, state fire marshal's office about blast surveys and radius and size of charges, et cetera. The answer is, we don't know. We have to work towards that. If it can all be preserved, it would all be preserved. If the vegetation can be preserved, if the rock has to come out, then that grade would come down. And then what would happen through there, Ms. McCormack, is, through the chair, is you would, the retaining wall would have the short retaining wall and the fencing along top of the wall, as we had discussed.
So is that rock on her property or your property?
It is on ours.
Well, it's very close to mine. It's not a rock. It's bigger than this room.
It's part of the earth coming up.
It's a...
Yeah, it's pretty big.
It's not a rock.
Yeah. But, but, Mr. Chair, it is on our, it is on our land, and the removal, we would have to do accordance with the right methods.
I see you moved it away.
Are you even entertaining the thought of blasting?
I'm, I don't know the answer to that, sir. So that's, that's down the line a little bit. I don't know what the right method of rock removal is, but for this purposes of preliminary discussion relative to something like this, we have to investigate all opportunities. So I want to make sure it's in the conversation, but I don't know what it will be yet.
Next question?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Ian, from the one, and to eleven Prairie Street. First, I just wanted to talk about the updated plan. It looks like you added vegetation along the west side of building D. Is that going to be new trees added? Also, I apologize, it's not at the last meeting. Basically, we're scheduled by side block, so there's a lot that our property abuts on two perimeters along building D and now the parking lot. Yes. So that west side of building D, it looks like there's...
I'm sorry, what number are you?
11.
11? Okay.
I just wanted to confirm that.
So there are trees on the west side of the building. That's what you're referring to. But again, we also have that same fencing that we've talked about that also exists along that property line as well.
Right. And so you did say that the retaining wall would move from the portion of our neighbor's property along the southwest side of the parking lot? But I assume it would remain along that north, plan north, and then along the plan west of building D?
So again, through the chair, we do have the retaining wall along that building because of the terraced elevations between our site and your property.
Okay. And the trees will be placed within the, I think it was 24 feet, based on the previous plans of your property?
Bart, do you know the distance? Bart is, Bart Lipinski is our landscape architect. Do you know the distances for the trees, sir?
I don't know the actual distance, but they would be on top of the wall between the building. So with the changes that were made throughout the site, it gave us a bigger opportunity to have a bigger plant buffer between the property lines and the proposed buildings.
And the fence would be...
And then the fence would be on top of the wall.
On top of the wall.
Yep.
Trees would be on the inside?
On the inside, correct.
Okay.
And the trees are there to get some height. I think at the last meeting, we discussed something like arborvitae, but now with more space, we could put in shade trees, trees that are going to bring the scale of the building down, full-size evergreens as opposed to arborvitae. So it opens up the plant pallet for a better buffer.
And what are the aggregate heights of those trees?
Shade trees could get 40, 50 feet tall. Evergreens could get just as big, but we're, we're talking way down the line.
You can go down the road and say, okay, we're going to do all six-foot-high arborvitae, and those things could go to 20 feet high.
Yeah.
Probably better.
Quickly, quickly.
Yeah, very quickly. So let's, let's have a little quick overview of that. I think the key focus for the butters is the buffer. And when you take a look at the cross-section that they provided here, it visually tries to help things. The question is, to what level and how much of a buffer? Because if you do six-foot arborvitae, three feet apart along that whole west side on top of that wall, you're never going to see the buildings.
My concern is, our property, it won't have the same slope, so that height difference will be drastically reduced. So with the trees being right next to property, it's a concern, and also the other visual pressure.
Right. And the trees, you know, what's the wall at that point? Five to six feet?
What's six?
So, you know, everything's going to be planted. A 10-foot or 15-foot tree is going to be now 20 feet. So it being on top of the wall is going to be beneficial to the buffer.
Okay, correct. And you're not putting trees to that southern portion along the north side of the property?
Well, no, we'll have, we'll have a, we're going to continue the buffer all the way around, along with the fence.
And then I do have more on the traffic.
Yes, so...
He's the traffic guy right there.[1658.63]
So, you know, the, everything's going to be planted. A 10-foot or 15-foot tree is going to be now 20 feet. So it being on top of the wall is, is going to be beneficial to the buffer.
Okay, correct. And you're not adding trees to that southern portion along the north side of the road?
Well, no, we'll have, we'll have a, we're going to continue the buffer all the way around, along with the fence.
And then I do have more on the traffic.
Yes, so.
He's the traffic guy right there.
Hold on, hold on one second. What we're going to do, because, you know, we, we clearly know what the traffic situation is there. They had their traffic consultant. We brought in our traffic consultant. Amy's here. And I would like to have Amy come up and, oh, let me ask you a question. What would you like to hear?
I have more comments on their research that they did on traffic study.
All right, why don't you go ahead and make the comments?
Okay, great. So my concern with the traffic study is the increase in traffic volumes and what was basically presented last time, using the presentation. So they said parking spots in D, so I assume it's the same numbers of traffic, but cars coming in and out of the lot. But the total parking spots are 342, which they estimated it to be about 908 trips in and out of the property per, on an average. So with that being said.
Probably had a lot more than that. We stopped.
Okay, so the safety concerns I have are for the, um, the traffic distribution, not immediately on a site, but where it'll filter out, or give them those, specifically Hamilton and Cedar Street. So based on the report, the EFC group recommended the, I'm just re-reading, re-reading, sorry, the VAI, evaluate the impacts of increased traffic along Hamilton and how the restrictive sightline would affect the safety of turning off Hamilton onto Cedar Street. VAI being an answer as a solution to this, to use a three-stage exit maneuver, which is basically a car stops, stops, stops until it's used, as a basic driving standard. So I'm not confident that this is an adequate solution, and I think that the town and project should take responsibility for the added traffic distribution, uh, disruptions. And then they also have, that was comment number eight. And then I have a comment on, third comment, number 10, which TIAA, TIAA provided analysis results for a Hamilton self-pound approach, showing that evidence of, that there is existing illegal movers. And they state, based on the existing peak hour traffic counts, two wrong-way vehicles were counted during the end of peak hour, which basically means cars are going the wrong way on one way.
Yep.
So VAI, VAI's response to that was to remove the data from the table, the presentation. And then that would, that was comment number 10. And so that added traffic would increase the risk of, added traffic of the 908 exit trips would increase the risk of that illegal traffic maneuver in a densely populated, populated area with children. And I think that solution is acceptable as a response. And then, okay, so then a summary, just like conclusion, the traffic study taken further proves the unsafe conditions of this project and will increase, increase for the community. And I think that the board should allow the town and the state to leave the current conditions, the current unsafe, current traffic conditions for adding to.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to address that little comment concerning the traffic?
Sure, I can go through a couple of those. For the record, my name is Daniel Lasibra. I'm a traffic engineer with Van Assen Associates. Um, I'll kind of start from the beginning of that, just as it relates to the trip generation. And I do apologize for the presentation, the actual slides we had last time. The trip generation was for the previous 200 units, whereas we're now down to 180. So those 980 trips, weekday, daily trips were for the 200 units. So 180 units is about 800 trips. It's about a 10% reduction in traffic for a 10% reduction in units as well. So I just want to get that on the record as well. As it relates to the, sorry, I'm juggling quite a few things here. Um, as it relates to the distribution of traffic, you may remember this figure, with about 15% going upward down Hamilton Avenue. As was noted, the peer reviewer requested that we look at a couple of things as they relate to Hamilton Avenue. One of them was sightlines going northbound as you go up to Cedar Street. As was noted, there are, as I'm sure all of you are well aware, two large rock walls on either side of the roadway that do limit sightlines from behind the stop bar as such, and is common in areas such as this, especially with sidewalks. Motorists will do what you've heard referred to as a three-stage exiting maneuver, which is essentially pulling up and making sure there's no pedestrians in the sidewalks first. Then, once that's clear, they then move up further and within to the sidewalk area to be able to see past the rock walls there. I also have a feeling that those rock walls are within the property of the cemetery as well, so they don't lay at least completely within the public right of way. And then the last thing, I will just note, as it relates to the removal of wrong-way traffic from that single intersection, that was suggested by the peer reviewer. So our response was essentially saying, sounds good, we will, we take no exception to that, and we will revise the analysis as such. So I just wanted to.
And just so that the, everyone's aware, we have our own traffic engineer that also does that follow-up. Amy, I'm, do you have anything to say? Concur with some of the reporting as well?
Yes, so I want to say on that note about removing the southbound Hamilton Street volumes, that wasn't to say we're just going to pretend it doesn't exist. That was to say that it is not, the, the impact on the delay of that southbound approach is not really of concern because the vehicle should not be making that movement. So the purpose of that was just to say, when we're comparing the delay before and after, we don't have to worry about the delay of that approach because it's not illegal.
Not supposed to be there.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It wasn't saying, let's just pretend that's not happening. It was just saying that is not going to be a factor in the level of service analysis.
Right. And, and I know that, that when Stop and Shop was operating out of there, I believe that, and who knows what's going to come there before. But that was 20, that was almost seven days a week of heavy traffic going through and through. And I do want to kind of just, and, and again, that roadway is not controlled by the town of Milford. However, Brian Murray did send this out dated September 10th in response to some notes for one East Main, East Main Street. And I don't know who wrote this, but it's, it's on the file. And he's basically, and this is coming out of the state rep's office. This, this actually was a, a request or a communication to.
I sent that. I sent the note to him.
Good job.
Thank you.
Um, basically, it's a response to Ms. Miller. It's from Carol Hiller from Sixth Prairie Street. And Brian Murray has addressed this through Mass DOT, and he indicated, and I'll read it, it's not, it's not long. "I am a receipt of your form, your form sent a contact to the Milford Highway Department that was hard copied and mailed to my State House office requesting information relative to the East Main Street Department of Transportation improvements. Pursuant to the same, we contacted District Three Highway Director at the Mass DOT Highway Division and learned that the project remains in the planning and review stages in terms of level of improvements that may ultimately be undertaken. The Director did indicate that due to the extent of wear on the roadway itself, the department may be looking to bid a reservicing project only for 2027, but still consider additional potential improvements for the future. I advised that your question was presented to the context of a pending 40B project directly off of Route 16, and he stated that the general traffic from that such development, if it should be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals and Constructed, would not impact any design considerations for the roadway or intersections. However, Mass DOT would be concerned about the entrance and exit of the development and most likely issue a number of requirements that would be the responsibility of the developer to complete. Hopefully, this information is helpful in further questions. Please be free to reach out again." I can supply a copy of this letter. I don't know if you guys have seen this, but we got this.
It's on the website.
It's on the website? Okay.
And through you, Mr. Chair, as well. That is entirely consistent with everything that we were expecting. We're going to have to go for a Mass DOT highway access permit. They're going to have their own set of reviews and recommendations, we'll call them, requirements to, to obtain that. And also, I did also reach out to some contacts in District Three to see if maybe they would give a, another traffic engineer any additional info, and they did not. What I got back was consistent with that, wherein, still in the planning stages, still trying to determine what could occur along there.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I have a comment on, on the letter. I actually appreciate you bringing it up because the project that the representative is talking about is primarily just for recircusing project and not the.
I understand that, that's what I read.
No, yes, I know. I'm just saying it, it won't affect the traffic.
No?
Implications, so I don't.
No, Route 16 is a state highway.
Yes.
That, that isn't controlled by the town of Milford.
No, I know. I'm just saying that I think we're adding to the, to the problem before it can be resolved.
Absolutely. I agree 100%.
Yep.
The state started.
Every home that gets built in this community, every home that we all live in, creates to all of it.
I understand. I, I just.
The question is.
It's frustrating.
The question is, with this development going in, if it goes in, and then something goes back into the old Stop and Shop, you're going to have a lot of traffic down there.
Exactly. And the, the parking lots are 300, just for this property, is 342 lot spots. So we have to count for that as being the maximum.
So, so there's a whole rule of thumb out there on all these developments, and I think, I don't know if you were in the room, on the reason of why these developments are hitting every city and town. Did we do, were you aware of what I said there?
Um, I think about the minimum percentage of.
So way back 20, 30 years ago, these apartment complexes that were approved as 40B, and I'll be very brief with this, they were only allowed to be 40B or the state had it at 40B for 25 years. After 25 years, they fell right to market rents. So we went from 10% down to like 6.2%. Every community in the state, exactly the same thing happened. So after that 25 years, it opened up, so now everybody can come in and go in any zone and do these 40Bs if you're under the 10%. That's why you're seeing them in every community.
And to my understanding is that there are also two other proposed projects, unfortunate what those other two would be, or 10%?
We.
We'll be above.
We're over.
Above.
We're over.
So we're adding to a problem on the state.
And, and again, let, let me kind of explain this aspect. We approved.
We thought we were all done a long time ago.
All big time.
When we were on Route 16, we approved 262 down on Route 16 on the Holliston line.
That district.
They never built it. So when they didn't pull a permit, those 262 went away. Okay? So then that's why others came in. To make a long story shot, we did Restaurant Depot and did those over there. All three of them got approved, and if they pulled the building permits in time, we would have been at a 10%. When they didn't pull Stone Ridge Two building permit, because it becomes a financial envelope, we were not at 10%. So the others are allowed, and Mass, Mass High, Mass Finance, the Mass Housing Authority authorized the letters to come in because they're entitled to have.
Then Stone Ridge pulled.
Because we were under the 9%. So now we're at 11.5. So this is where we are. We're listening to this. They have the opportunity, we need to go through this process. Wherever it ends up, I don't know. But I'm just trying to give you why, the background of how we all end. Every community's in the same boat. Every community's in the same situation. Look at the Route 9 traffic in Framingham.
I think one thing that needs.
All of Mendon Traffic, Uxper Traffic, they come right through.
So then I'll just, I guess, say this. I don't think the location of this proposed project is the safest.
Well, I just want to say one thing. This land will get developed by something someday.
But then quantity has.
We, we don't know what it's going to be. We, we don't know what it's going to be.
They could change the zoning, and this could be an industrial park.
We, we, so, what I'm just saying, this, this.
It'll be a soccer field. Warehouse, warehousing.
This property will be developed someday, just so everybody knows.
No matter what. Just like.
There won't be Amazon trucks.
Just like every single one of us are in a home that was developed over many, many years, all of you are in the same, a developer developed it. We are getting full of all these homes, creates traffic. Other communities grow, creates traffic. They all come through here to get to 495, and of course, the other way through Bellevue. So we, this board gets it. We get it.
We understand.
We're blamed for a lot.
We've been doing this, we've been, we're, we're 40B out right now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
Bob Medrin, I live on, on Charles Street.
Welcome back.
So it's my, my understanding that if those, I'm just, this is what I heard, I'm not saying it's fact. If those two lots in the front, you change from commercial to residential, then this could be a sub-development and could have single-family homes instead of.
You have, it's commercial 200 feet in, and then the balance is residential. They could, they could do a, you could do a cost of development.
So potentially, if those two in the front, the 200 feet was rezoned residential, you could have a subdivision instead of something commercial.
Well, again, Mass Housing gave them this letter as an authorized.
I'm just saying, but, but that is a potential.
If, if the town of Milford changes zoning and it goes to industrial, God bless us, because it'll be a nightmare.
Yeah, we already fought that one once, but he.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, there's been a number of proposals over a long, many years to rezone that, which have, and I can think of two, which were defeated at town meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I think one, one time they wanted to do all commercial on the site, right?
I think there was, that was one.
Yes.
That would even be worse.
At some point in time, obviously, town meeting can change its zoning, unauthorized rezoning change, that's always possible.
Right, right. So, so when you're eligible for that Mass Housing letter, you can go in any zone. You can go into an industrial park, Restaurant Depot, and then look at what happened all over there. So.
That's fine over there.
Well, of course it is, as long as it's not close to me, right? That's the point.
Close to me.
We get it, we get it, we get it. Any other question, ma'am? Did you have a question?
No, no, sorry.
What's that?
So.
Bob's got it all.
My other concern was, we can draw any wetlands because according to 760 Scan 5603, and then it's reiterated at 760, 5608, that you guys can allow just about anything except for them taking over wetlands.
They're going to have to apply the Conservation Commission for.
Yeah, they're going to have to do all of that.
No question. Now, this board will address that, like the Conservation.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, laws, I'm not going to read them to you unless you want to get them down.
But there's also, there's also a mechanism, let's say in your own single-family house, you have a wetland park in the middle of your yacht. You have the right to replicate it to a different area as long, legally, as long as you go through the Conservation Board. Anything here, they have to do the same thing going through the Conservation Board, which is not under our.
What?
Any other question? Yes, sir?
Uh, your name, sir? Drew Davis, 64 Hayward Street. What I'm talking about basically is the conglomerate of everything going on right now between like five projects in town, like we're going to gain 1,000 more people. A lot of commissioners said, we have no problem with water. Well, I'm sitting right now at category four, and there's no more categories.
Every year, we have a drought. Yep.
Nope, that's understood. Now I'm thinking, if there's no more categories than four, what's next? We can't go to the bathroom on Monday or Tuesday, we get a flush on Thursday or Saturday.
Well, we can't take a shower until Saturday. We have to go Monday through Friday.
So what, when is the town, you board people, going to turn around and start telling the people that are coming into town, these conglomerates, hey, we need a new well. We need some money, drain a new well, put another well in. Why aren't you doing that? You're not even, you're not even proactive.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, just in, in that regard, in relation to 40B projects, in fact, this board did, in one of the earlier projects, require that the developer, or work with the developer, which ended up donating, I think the number was $650,000 to the Milford, then Milford Water Company, now Milford Water Department, to develop the Godfrey Brook wells and the Dill Street wells, which has been done with the money from a developer. So just so you have that historical background.
I think, unless I'm mistaken, the Godfrey Street wells are shut down because it's contaminated.
No, it's not contaminated. It's, it has not.
It's.
It's not obviously final approval yet from the Commonwealth. Testing has to be done. The work has been done, and the Dill Street wells are operational. I know the Godfrey Brook will be operational once they get that final approval. But yeah, that is all done with money, money that came from developers on 40B.
I agree with you.
Why, why isn't, why isn't it automatic that you, these conglomerates that come in, we need a well. I'm going to give you 100 dollars, I want to see the well.
You can't do that. You cannot do it. It's illegal to try and do that. That's, that's not, that's not even legal.
I understand.
We are going to run out of water eventually, period.
Excuse me?
We're going to run out of water eventually.
Oh, I see it.
And we, we've had the water company here, we've asked the questions, they keep coming and saying to us, we've got plenty of water.
I don't see it.
We have, we've had them on many of these meetings. And that's my biggest thing, is about water, water, water. Only so much falls from the sky.
Yes, ma'am?[1773.91] Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say that I lived 27 years in the state of New Hampshire, and the town of Londonderry, which grew from 9,000 to 27,000, had an impact fee, it was wonderful. We built four schools while I was there.
With the impact fee?
Yeah.
You ready for the impact fee? You ready for the impact fee?
I assure him, how do we do it here?
They're going taxes.
It's the developers that pay the impact fee.
Anybody else care to be heard? Yes, please.
Lisa Rappi at 11 East Town Street, I just have a question as far as the board's opinion, you all, you know the traffic situation, what do you think that this project and all the other projects and the projects in the future will do to the town?
There'll be no more projects in the future.
How much more will all the roads...
All right, so it's funny, it's funny you ask that question, because we did get a, an update, and this affordable component, it goes by the population, we were notified, I don't know what, a year or two ago, from the Planning Department, or that once we hit a certain level of population, then our 10% is going to go down to 8%. Well, right now, we're basically permitted, we hope, enough to carry us for, because all of these 40Bs now do not go offline, like they did before.
Right.
That's in perpetuity.
You said that the last, the last...
So, I don't even know where we are, we're probably at 11...
We're over the 10%, the 2030 census could, would likely, if nothing else happened, we'd put us back under the 10%.
Yes, did you hear that?
Well, the 40B...
That's the key point, the 2030.
But Jerry, all the people coming in on these 40Bs is going to add to our census on top of it.
Right, yeah.
So we're creating a problem to create a project.
Again, but the next time it'll be measured in the 10% of the 70, it'll be 2030.
And we should be at about 12% when we're done, right?
Might be, might be. We're basically hurting ourselves because we're bringing more in, but we're only 22% has to be the 40B.
And that's if the state doesn't change the percentage.
We've had a lot of move-outs.
If the state changes the percentage to say like 8%, then just to get more people in towns, we don't know. Like Jerry had said once at one of the other meetings, 40 years since they have, since they changed that, correct?
Statue?
The statue about 10%.
Be closer to 60 years.
60 years.
In effect, yeah.
So maybe we want to see it.
Is any other comments or questions concerning this? Yes, sir?
I just kind of like to wrap up, because there was one thing that kept coming up in the last meeting, how they have the right to develop their property. So, I've been in Milford 31 years, I had my house built, so my property got developed. When I, when I decided to build it, I hired a separate lawyer, separate from the bank, just because I wanted to know what could happen around. So we did, we did all the research and knew everything that could be developed behind it. There's a bunch of people that own lots back there that are only 40 by 80, their grandfather in, they can't access them, so I knew that wasn't going to happen. We tried, at one point, to get a strip wall in there, which I battled that one. So, I'm going to appeal to you, just as, if you, if you did what I did, I went through all this, and now I'm looking at, and as I told these gentlemen when they were over here, over to my property, we met a janitor, it's a beautiful building, you're going to be good neighbors, it's not, you know, none of that's a concern to me, it's just having it in my backyard after I did all this. I even asked them, "Would you want this in your backyard?" I'm not going to call anybody out, but I'm going to pose that to you. After you bought your home, you did all your research to make sure what could be built behind you or around you. The biggest problem was, I didn't want to live in Milford, I wanted wooded area, and I met a Milford girl that skated Dallas, little skate Dallas romance.
Oh my God, did you really?
Good Italian girl, La Bari, married her and told her, you know, I was going to stay in Milford was if I had woods around. You come down where I am, it's nice and quiet, it's nice and peaceful, so I'm going to appeal to you...
High groundwater where you are?
Lot of groundwater.
Lot of groundwater.
So I'm going to appeal to you, would you want this in your backyard?
Well, the skate pants?
Yeah, after, after you did all your homework and knew what you were up against, and I understand leaving hands and tie, I just want you to review with that thought.
Just, just so you know...
I have them in my backyard.
This, this board, I don't know what anybody's thinking, okay? I do know that this is a major project that can be a major distraction and a major issue on this street. Now, saying that, they're allowed to do those presentations. This board will vote based on everything that was presented.
Well, absolutely, that's why I wanted to review with my...
And input from you guys.
So, you know...
Bob, we, excuse me, we, I speak for myself, I completely understand where you're coming from, but to Dave's point that he had said earlier, at some point in time, somebody's going to develop that land, whether it be, let's say in another five years, somebody, somebody else comes in, these people put their, their project, at some point in time, it's going to get developed.
Somebody will be there.
So, for example, there was a, I don't know if you know where the old, where the Alamo was, okay? We had somebody come to us probably three years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, wanting to put a gas station in there.
Yeah.
Right? Okay? And for whatever reason, that got moved, I don't know if it had something to do with the Conservation Commission or whatnot, but Dave, and I remember this, and he looked right at them and said, "You have to understand that something could go in there, they have the right to do it, they might want to put a hotel up there," right? So I'm not saying that you need to understand what could possibly go in there, down the line, you kind of got to wrap your head around what, what could go in there anyway.
That could, that could...
And that could be more of an effect, could upset the situation more. I, I get 100% where you're coming from. I have two kids in school, traffic, the school, to get to their point with the water, it's all...
None of that even concerns me. I bought my house knowing that everything there was single-family residential, that those two front lines were commercial. Now, we're going to come in and rezon it, which I don't think is right.
Well, we can't rezon it, Dave had explained that to you, we don't have, we don't have a choice of whether or not we...
Well, I get it on the 40Bs.
Yes, okay.
When you're talking about future development.
Correct.
But put 17, put 24 single-family homes in there, you won't hear boo from me, because that's what it's zoned for, that's what I did my research on, and I knew that could happen. I have no argument with that. I, I, none whatsoever. That's what I expected. I know what, what can go in there.
We understand where you're coming from.
So, the big thing is, they bought this property knowing that was single-family residential. I can't, I couldn't even put a second floor on, an additional floor on my house to take in my in-laws, because it was two and a half floors max, that's it. Also, I went to put a shed on my property, they're telling me I shouldn't put it up. Why? Because I'm not 100 feet away from wetlands. Guess what, my lot's 100 by 152, goes 100 feet back and the stream cuts right across my yard. So, I know they was able to do that, but I had to fight to put a shed up. So there again, it's just, they bought this knowing it's single, single-family, I know this is still going to be residential, and I get the whole 40B thing, but single-family residential. So, like I said, I did all my homework, I paid money for a lawyer, separate from the bank, $1,000 back 31 years ago was quite a bit of money, to make sure this wouldn't happen. So, that's where I...
I understand.
Nope, and I get it, you know, we all, there's a bunch of us here who said, "You know what, I would have had the strip wall going in there, that little plaza that was in this."
State of Massachusetts approved this. That's the problem.
Any other questions that we have? Wrap it up?
I just want...
Our hands are tied on that.
I just wanted you to understand where I'm coming from.
Hey, Bob, you've been here 31 years?
Yeah.
I've been here all my life, 69 years, I hear you.
Yep, we all hear you. We all do.
Highland Street is a direct... Any other question?
Yes.
We're going to walk by the Mary. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
So, I know I've mentioned it before, and you're saying that it doesn't relate to the project, but the runoff that comes through Bob's property also comes through the cemetery right across my backyard, across the dews. There's time, nobody maintains it, nobody keeps it up, all that water eventually is going to run right into those marshlands or wetlands. So, who, who is maintaining those little waterways that are coming through the bridges, that are coming through Fortune Boulevard draining out?
That's, that's not under our jurisdiction, it's...
But it all will end up in those wetlands, that's where it all goes. When it blocks out...
Yeah, you've got houses with...
It gets flooded over the road.
Yeah. Yeah, that groundwater is real high over there.
That plaza too, they dumped the snow over the amendment, they're not supposed to be doing that because it's going to result in, but they do.
What flood it out, we're all set.
Who's there?
Whoever owns that plaza now, they come right around the side of Gold's Gym and just right over the...
What the hell out of them.
You, you can hear them when they empty the bucket.
Well, I had put a phone call into the Conservation Board.
Real quick.
Okay, which, what do we have?
Anything on that, Dave, are you continuing?
Yeah, yeah, probably one more.
Yes, one more question, that's it.
So, I would still like to get a pretty good, clear understanding of what the lighting is going to look like, because a six-foot fence is not very tall whatsoever, and the lighting coming through the parking lot...
Well, it's elevated too, you're elevated two plus. Yeah, there's guidelines, and maybe the next, the next hearing, if you can give us a visionary on that, on the, on the lighting?
Yeah, a photometric plan, could we...
The amount of digital and what it will look like from Prairie Street, just through the woods and what we could see of the buildings, like through the trees would be really helpful.
So you're, you're able to do a photometric plan based on these buildings?
We are, you, you do have a photometric plan in the full package that was originally submitted?
Okay, sorry.
Now, we obviously haven't done one on the modification that we're presenting to you this evening.
Can we do that for the next meeting, just so we can present it? And hopefully we'll have the...
Sure.
Yeah, we can update it.
Sure. I don't have a question, I just want to thank them for coming out in a meeting, although I did meet with them on channel 9. I want to thank you for all listening to us with understanding and...
I would ask for our next meeting, we get the same presence from you people.
And by the way, you, you need to bring your wife next time.
She does keep you in check.
I met her, I came up here from...
Ah, she gets scared away right into the room.
From Lumberdale Island, I couldn't skate, my body brought me up here, I met her, that was it.
All right, sure.
So, another thing, just to add to the traffic concern, is one way that we have to get out of Prairie Street is through St. Mary's Cemetery.
It's closed.
It's, maybe it's open, maybe it's not, I don't know, I mean, it's anybody's guess on whether or not they want to leave the gate open.
Yeah, we don't control anything there. That's private.